So that meeting over there starts at 11:00, so if we're not done in here by about 10:00.
The Moore County Commissioners Meeting for January the 8th, 2013 is now in session.
Please watch after this commission, this county, the county staff, those in public that have attended today. You serve the public, do your will. Please watch over the men and women around this world, both families, serving our country as well as their families that relate to them to return home.
Please release the flag, for the Constitution of America, to be reliable, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, everything and justice for all.
Having everybody back after the holidays, I hope everybody has a safe holidays. At this time, we're going to call a recess for those who wish to attend the swaddening service of all the constitutional officers over at the coatroom upstairs. For the meeting, by order. We're going to start out. I want to thank everybody for being patient and working with us this morning. Ms. Lee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, first person to speak this morning would be Ms. Patricia Hardman. She wants to speak to the board in reference to the lighthouse.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pat Hardman, 123 Marina Lane. I want to start by saying thank you. For trying to keep the historic, keep that same last lighthouse on the Cape. You sent in the request of the feds. To Warren, you've got to say thank you to her. She did an excellent job. Followed up over and over. The bottom line, fellas, is, and ladies, we were simply out lobbied by the city. And you have been good stewards. This county commission has been good stewards of the lighthouse since the 204 lease. And you've got a lease that runs for 25 years. And so I know many of you thought that that was going to put you in position to get that lighthouse. You provide an annual support. That lighthouse does not support itself. You've got, you're carrying the insurance on it. You're carrying the maintenance on it. Tune in for about $30,000 a year. And you've done that, and there hadn't been one citizen in this county that said, "Don't support that lighthouse with our tax dollars." And we certainly haven't said that on the Cape. Though some of you can't believe that the Star might have misquoted something, but you also went out and got an $800,000 worth of grants. And those grants were managed by this county, is that not right, Warren?
I believe the application was done jointly with the historical society, the county had.
And county administered that, and you did the work and put the money up there to get that done. So you've done well. I mean, I can't fault you, except we just didn't get out and lobby to tell those faithful people that we've got a safer place than they have. We feel that the feds made a horrible mistake, giving the lighthouse to a broke city. So we're looking at. We've talked about moving to Cape Selenus, and that's going to cost about $300,000. Moving into town is going to cost about $600,000. This is the plan that we sent in. The only plan I've seen from the city was fancy architectural windows. The mayor's legacy might turn into the mayor's folly, and if so, the county's going to be expected to pick up the tab. What we ask you to do is to please let the feds protest that, and please let the feds know that the county still wants that lighthouse and still wants it at Selenus Park. And if the city can't in a timely manner raise that $600,000 to move it, that y'all will be in a position to accept it. It's just such a shame that.
Hold on. Got a motion by Mr. McDaniel, motion carries, Mr. Foles, motion carries five and oh.
That after almost 200 years of that lighthouse overlooking, that historic lighthouse overlooking that Gulf, that now will be overlooking a parking lot in downtown St. Joe. There's got to be something that can be done about that, and I'd let Ms. Betty come up and give you a little bit more argument, if you don't mind.
Ms. Betty McNeil would also like to speak about the lighthouse.
My name is Betty McNeil, I live in Indian Pass, and I have been on this lighthouse committee since its inception. And I was so taken aback to read in the Star that the historical society was backing that, and I have been dormant for the last three or four years for various reasons. But I am totally shocked that this could even come up. It seems to me that it's just a covetous, greedy land grab for the city of Port St. Joe. And I do not understand how they got away with it to this extent. And it just never occurred to me that a lease that we have for 2029 could just be ignored. And a mistake has been made, and my feeling is that any mistake that's been made can be corrected. And I think that if we make a concerted effort, that we can relocate that structure to Selenus Park that we already have. The historical aspect of it would be totally ruined if you take it and make it an amusement park. We don't need another Disney World up here. And this is, I know that the dollar sign is in a lot of people's eyes, but that ought not to be the overriding reason that we do what we do in this county. There's a quality of life that needs to be preserved, and I just don't believe that the lighthouse should be taken off the Cape. I know that the erosion has come, and the light has been moved from the end of the point, St. Joe Point, Black's Island, all around, because of the weather. But to let the city of Port St. Joe do a grab from the county is just ridiculous, and I hope we can get your support. I know that you requested it, and I don't know why it was not granted to leave it where it is, since we have the lease. The county has the lease till year 2029, and for somebody just to be able to erase that is just totally incomprehensible to me. I was shocked and surprised and certainly disappointed, and I have lost sleep over it, which I shouldn't do. But if you can use your influence to reverse this error that's been made, I would be eternally grateful, and I'll do anything I can in support of relocating it to a safe place. I don't think the Air Force is going to give us any problem, but I don't know why a lease can be ignored the way this was. And that's really all I have to say, that I am totally opposed to having the city of Port St. Joe steal something that belongs in the south end of the county down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil.
Chairman, one of the things that I had talked with Ms. Pat about was the fact that they have given that thing to the city, but him to be able to raise that $600,000 is going to be a big, a big deal, is going to be a big push. What I talked with Pat about is at least let's send a letter stating that if the city's not able to complete that move, that the county is ready and willing to continue that process and try to move it to Selenus Park. So I certainly understand one of the problems that we had, and Tuan did a great job with the.
We paid the upkeep on that thing. Now, if that's not ours, we're not going to pay anything for that.
Absolutely. Matter of fact, Brett, I think that's probably the first thing we need to do, they've already moved them. So we need to look at the insurance cost and what we need to do to drop those insurances on that type of thing. So I'll put that in the form of a motion that we'll work on that letter.
I got a motion by Mr. Yeager, a second for discussion.
I have, one issue is that Ms. Alsobrook, who would have a wealth of information for us to maybe present another viewpoint, she is here, I saw.
Just six minutes, review of what their plans are of the lighthouse, we've already heard from her.
Yes, I was here, but I think that she would like an opportunity to rebut what our other presenters have presented here. I'm just asking to hold off on voting on the motion, it's a simple.
I think it's a simple motion, a simple second, you know. The motion is to go to the feds and ask the feds for reconsideration on this. No big deal.
Well, the motion may need to be adjusted or amended based on, can we ask Ms. Alsobrook to.
Sure, we've got a motion on the floor in a second, and I think it'd be appropriate to let the scale come up.
Ms. Alsobrook, we are discussing the lighthouse, and there's a motion on the floor. Maybe Commissioner Yeager, you could repeat your motion.
Sure, we've just made a motion that states that we would like for the group, the Air Force and all, to consider that if the city could not move the lighthouse and get the funds, that we are in line and we are ready and willing to take that project on. So I think there's some discussion about, you know, the decision that was made, and Commissioner Bryan wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about what the city's plans are, and I know you've been deeply involved in that, and I've seen the report and the architectural drawings and those type of things.
And we've had two speakers present on the other side of it of keeping it on the Cape, and of course, I'm happy that it's moved to the city. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have this type of a motion, but wanted to hear if you have any input prior to voting on that.
I met with the city yesterday, excuse me, and we're creating a capital campaign to raise the money, and we have significant funds already in place and pledged. I don't know what, I don't know what the policy is for National Park Service and GSA, if they take someone in a second position. Because what happens is that we just receive constructive possession. So I think that that would be a conversation to have with the National Park Service on how they would want you to proceed to take a second position.
Well, the motion on the table right now, the motion is that if the city cannot.
That's correct, that's correct.
By the services, that the county would not step in.
But I also don't want to see us in a position where we are against the city. I think that we should be working with the city in the effort to relocate the lighthouse. So I'm afraid that if we take a stand that the lighthouse should stay on the Cape and work against the efforts of the city, that it's not good for anyone in the county. And again, I will reiterate that it is in the county, it still is in Gulf County if it is in the city. And many of us have people who are our constituents who live in the city of Port St. Joe. Same issue would come up with something that was going into the city. So I don't want us to be in a position where we're working against.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in order, I'd like to address the attorney here. Mr. Attorney, a note here. Lease, have you read the lease? It's been a while, but I did read it a while back.
Is there any opt outs in there if both parties is in agreement? The lease is between the county.
Correct.
And the United States Air Force or the federal parks.
Correct, and there was reservations in that lease. In addition to it, when we received notice of the surplusing of that lighthouse, they put all parties on notice that they were going to follow federal code and surplus it in accordance with their guidelines, in which they did, and they noticed the county, they noticed the city, and to any interested parties. And then they followed the steps of what they could surplus it to. The city submitted their request, the county submitted theirs. And I'd just offer an additional comment, you know, if the motion is, I think, a contingency to show that, if it helps the commission at all as we draft that language to show that, you know, there's an acknowledgement of the city's award, an expression from the county of, you know, support and cooperation. And then, as I think the motion is, that if there was an inability down the road not to do that, that the county would be there to be considered. I don't know if anybody else has expressed or submitted to the Department of Interior other than the county or the city, I think they're the only two parties, so.
That's correct.
If it's the commission's will, you know, we can draft the language in such a way to show the cooperation and.
And I think that's the will, I mean, I've talked with Ms. Hardman about this, is once this decision's made, we all do need to work together and figure out how can we, you know, preserve and protect this piece of Gulf County's history. And so I agree with Commissioner Bryan that we need to work together. I think the motion that I've made is fairly clear, is that if the city for some reason can't perform and can't get that moved, that the county would be willing to continue to process Selenus Park, which would be, you know, which would be a lot less money, I think. But at the end of the day, I think, I think we're all in support of preserving and protecting that piece of Gulf County's history.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I'd like, the only thing that I have against what you just stated, you know, I want to go back to your comment with the city and with the county. This is the county lighthouse, been under county jurisdiction 20 years or whatever. But what you just said was, it's okay for the city to step in and do what they could do with that lighthouse, as possible bringing it to the city, but it's not okay for the county.
Well, no, that's not.
That kind of knocks me up right there. That's what you said, that was your statement.
No, that's, and I, I need to make myself clear.
You do.
Well, I think that we both, the city and the county, made a play for the lighthouse. The city is in our county, and the people who live in the city live in Gulf County. And we have got to get over this drawing that line and being city against county. It won't work for us, we are not that big of a county, we need to all work together. So we made a play for it, the city made a play for it, and they were awarded the lighthouse. So we all need to work together and make this work for the good of the entire county, and it can, and we should all have input. And Ms. Alsobrook has come to us, she's been very forthcoming with the plans. I also do not want to see an amusement park, which is what was mentioned, I agree with that, I hope that is not the intention. But I think that we need to all work together and not dig our heels in, waste resources, waste time. Got to just move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm in order, I call for a vote on the motion.
All right, we got, we have one person left in this before we call her, we have one.
If I could just comment on the amusement park, that's about the farthest thing from our design and our plans, if anything possible. It's not to be an amusement park, and the package I gave you lets you know that. Also, as we embark on our capital campaign, I think it would be very important that we do show solidarity. You know, in fact, the city was awarded the structures. I would suggest that you consider putting this vote off for a month or two, because you can always make the vote and step in. But to do it now, I think, would continue to divide us between county and city, which is something we're trying so hard to overcome.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just address that first, if you don't mind. This isn't against the city, or, I mean, this isn't trying to divide, what's motion was, it's very simple. It's a motion that if the city cannot perform for some unknown reason, that we will continue to have our application there and are ready and willing to accept that in case the city doesn't. We're going to continue to work with the city, I work with the city very well, and, you know, I hate for people to even say that we don't work together. We work together on a number of issues that never come in these board meetings. And so it's a simple motion, it's nothing against the city, it's just a motion that says, in case the city can't perform, we're ready and willing.
Nonetheless, there is a psychological impact on that, especially when we go out to fundraise. Well, what if, what if, what if, you know, and I understand what you're going to do, and I see that you're probably going to do it. I would, I just thought this was a really wonderful opportunity for us to work truly together without, without exception.
I'm ready for the vote on the vote.
We got a young lady that wishes to speak.
Julia Cunningham is our next speaker in reference to the lighthouse. Julia Cunningham.
Ms. Judy.
Happy New Year, good to see some old friends, nice to meet some new ones. I agree that we shouldn't waste any time and resources in, you know, moving this lighthouse alone. And I would also like to work with the city, I'd like the city to work with us on keeping it on the Cape, where it's always been. Not only the financial ramifications of it, but this is 200 years of history. You move this into the city, the history's all gone, it doesn't mean anything anymore. Additionally, some of the proposals that I've seen have said that it's safer to move it in town, where I understand that it's a 14, 15-foot floodplain, and actually, Selenus Park is accretion, and it's much safer to keep it at Selenus Park. You know, we're talking about, you know, we talked about the lease, but I've heard, you know, that it has to be moved by storm season. That's like five months away. I'm not sure how the city's going to be able to raise, you know, well over a half a million dollars, you know, by storm season and get that moved. I'm not sure, and correct me if I'm wrong, if, you know, they've had contractors out there, and if the plans have been made. Pat Hardman's done a great job in having contractors out there, we have come to, you know, we've costed the lines. To move two miles, just to move the lines from Progress Energy, is $30,000 to $40,000. The way that the city would have to move it in is 92 lines, so it's about $175,000. We also understand from the DOT that it would take two moves to move it into the city, because the lighthouse is 150 by 30, and then you've got the three structures. So if you're talking about doing this twice, the, moving the lines alone is more than it's going to cost to move it to Selenus Park. Additionally, we have a pledge from someone over in Indian Pass for $100,000 already to keep it on the Cape, and we haven't even started fundraising. So I think that the fundraising impact by keeping it where it's supposed to be on the Cape and keeping the historic value of it, we're going to raise a lot of money for that. You know, I think if the city doesn't have a plan, you know, or they might have a plan, I don't mean to say that, but I just, I think that it's, if the city can come up with $500,000 or $600,000, I think that the citizens of Port St. Joe would be served better if they might, you know, fix the water, or, you know, I understand that the county is paying for some of the bathrooms in the parks, because they can't even afford to repair the bathrooms in the park. If they're not keeping, you know, keeping track of what they have today, I don't know how they're going to raise this money and, you know, pay to support the lighthouse. So I would, I mean, I would like to move, to keep it on the Cape totally, I don't know if we can do that, I know we have to go through the Air Force. But I would appreciate all of your support in just preserving a part of history.
Thank you very much, can we move with the motion?
The motion.
Before we, before we do, I would request that Commissioner Yeager amend his motion to add the support of working with the city. And I also would like to note that the city has some problems, and the county has some problems too. And we all need to work better at our, at our issues, I would make that request.
Sure, I'll amend my motion, that was one of the things that the attorney said that we could, matter of fact, I mean, it doesn't have to be sent tomorrow. So if you want us to draft the letter and then bring it before the board, I don't even have a problem with that. But at least, once we draft the letter, we'll send it to all the commissioners to let them know what it says. But we want to work with the city, we want to work however we need to do to preserve that. We made a good push, we did a great application for this, the decision's been made. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, we'll request that, you know, if it doesn't work out for the city, we're there and ready and willing to protect this piece of Gulf County's history by moving it to Selenus. There again, we are ready and willing to work with the city in however we can, so we'll do the letter.
Can I ask just one more question? Can there be a timeframe, because it's supposed to be moved by storm season? I mean, that's a few months away, I mean.
You know, Mr. Chairman, what I saw in that, in the letters was, give us a plan. And I presume that the city did the same thing we did, we gave a plan, however, one of the, one of the caveats of that plan is fundraising. And so, you know, I don't know at the end of the day if there's a hard line in the sand for the Air Force or for the GSA. However, you know, that's just for them to make that decision at the end of the day.
We got a motion by Mr. Yeager, we got a second by.
Mr. Mcnammore.
Mr. Mcnammore, you oppose?
Wait a minute, question here, it's on the original motion or this modified motion?
It's modified motion.
What is your modified motion, Mr.?
Just that we would include that we're ready and willing to work with the city on this issue also.
We have a second by Mr. Mcnammore, you oppose? No oppose, motion carries five and oh.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on your agenda today is Mr. Curtis Kreiderman to speak to the board in reference to RVs and other issues.
Good morning, my name's Curtis Kreiderman, I live on Americas Avenue, St. Joe Beach. And I'm here this morning to address the issue of the development and growth in the neighborhood out there at St. Joe Beach in regard to people coming in from different states or wherever, buying a lot, bulldozing it, putting down some gravel, dragging on a 10, 12, 15-foot trailer, setting up their screened-in tent in their home sweet home. They're right on the property line, they don't follow any rules or regulations. Apparently, there really are no rules and regulations for this sort of thing. So what we're ending up with, the residents there that have been there for years, is a tent city, a shanty city, which was not what we signed up for. And I'm just here to suggest that we make some sort of guidelines or standards or rules, if you will, that everybody has to follow. And these people are doing this under the premise that they're going to put this small trailer there and habitate until they build a home. And it's just not the case, they're sitting there for years, and they're living in these 10 and 12 and 15 and 20-foot trailers. And from what I may understand, there are no rules about it. They can put that trailer right on the property line, I've seen the laundry hanging in the county road right away, this kind of thing. So I'm not suggesting that we regulate them right out of business, I'm just suggesting that we put some sort of standards or rules in place that they have to follow to live like this and develop our community.
Well, I have spoken with Mr. Kreiderman and had Mr. Aiken with code enforcement and building department look at it. And we know that this is something that the board spent a lot of time on about a year, year and a half ago. I guess we all agree that there are some issues that need to be addressed, but it's not something that can be done. My history has shown.
Well, we have went over that RV issue, and we spent quite a while on that, Mr. Attorney, can you kind of give us a little.
Short version.
On the RV.
Short version.
Self versions, the way we left off.
We have a comprehensive ordinance that's been before the county commission and had public hearings. The good and the bad of our RV, our ordinance, is we've had community input on several, and we have several members from the community that are here today that have sat on some of these recent ordinance subcommittees that have come before you all after several meetings and have put a comprehensive package together of their concerns and their recommendations. Many of those ordinances the last few years have passed. The RV ordinance, after several public hearings, had items in there that it was struck down by the commission. So there has been extensive discussion amongst the public and this commission last year and a half, two years, on RVs. And it addressed Mr. Kreiderman's issues, that proposed ordinance. Some of the things that he's referring to, if people obviously take certain steps on their property in terms of aesthetics, there's nothing there in terms of what people do on the property, in terms of those types of aesthetics that they can restrict against. The code enforcement officer and the department have nuisance ability under a nuisance ordinance, but some of the issues that he's referring to have more to do with setback requirements, the ability to put more than one RV per parcel on a property, whether or not they're stuffed up with power or sewer hookup or water hookup, those things were addressed by that ordinance. So at the will of this commission, we can revisit the issues. I'd be happy to talk to Mr. Kreiderman and listen and discuss with him as well, and try to work with him to see if there's anything there in terms of his neighboring property. But I do know that the county staff and the commissioner have looked at this specific issue and have been out actually to the property and have worked over the last month or so to see if there's anything there that you have on your books that could be used in terms of bringing that property into compliance, but it is, in essence, in compliance right now.
Do we have any setback, those on the book right now?
Not on that, I mean, you, there's several properties where you have more than one RV on the properties, and in terms of the setbacks, there's no requirements with regards to those RVs. Actual single-family dwellings, you have your setback requirements, these RVs are outside of that definition.
Do I have any comments on the board?
I would just say we've went through this extensively. This was a tough issue, and end of the day, the issue just went away after all the efforts. However, I think that there are some things that we can do that would be. However, I think that there are some things that we can do that would be acceptable, so to speak, to, to address the issue. I think the issue is, is the biggest in, in Commissioner O'Brien's district. And so I would just say, let Commissioner O'Brien work with, uh, code enforcement and work with the attorney and see if there's some things that we can do to help the aesthetics. I, I, I understand the issue. I mean, you, you, you build a house out there, and you, you, you think everybody else is gonna build a house, and they have three RVs right next to you, and they really don't take care of it. So I, I understand the issue, but I would just suggest that Commissioner O'Brien work with the attorney and with staff and see if there are some things that we can add to an existing ordinance that would at least address some of those issues.
And, and we have been working through some of these issues, but it, it will take a little bit of time.
Well, thank you. I'll leave it in your capable hands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kreiderman. That's all we have for the public, ma'am.
At this time, we're gonna ask for a motion to accept the consent, Jim.
Good move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Backed by Mr. Mike, Mike Daniels, Mclemore. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh. Public hearing?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, the next order on the agenda is, uh, with regards to Florida Statute 163. Um, the counties required under the capital improvements only to put in place a five-year capital improvement plan. Um, and that's to be reviewed annually and amended by ordinance as necessary. Um, Mr. Richardson has noticed for today's meeting, in accordance with the statute, uh, a proposed revision of that capital improvement plan. You all have it in your packet, um, and it is scheduled for today's public hearing. If you would allow me, I'll read it by title and turn it over to Mr. Richardson for comment and then as well as public, uh, input. Uh, but the ordinance reads as follows, in ordinance per the requirements of Florida Statute 163, to yearly review and update the Gulf County five-year capital improvement schedule incorporating the Gulf County School District 2012-2013 work plan and incorporating by reference the updated concurrency tracking data, providing for repeal of the ordinance and conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Um, it has been properly noticed, um, scheduled for today's public hearing. And I'd, uh, ask David if you have any additional comments and some insight for the commission.
Mr. Chairman, um, this is, uh, before the, uh, growth management reform, um, two years ago, uh, this used to be part of an amendment process, and today it's just an ordinance and updated. Uh, we really are not legally required to send it to the state, but, uh, uh, they do request it. But we do have to do it. Now, that is a legal requirement. So this is our first process to do this, and there'll be two public hearings. Um, the last meeting of this month will be for adoption of the ordinance or of the capital improvement schedule. For a refresher for, uh, the board and the, uh, public, uh, are the, uh, the essentials concurrency. Um, there are four areas that are concurrency required statewide. There is no option to get out of them, that is water, sewer, drainage, and solid waste. We have additional concurrency issues in the comp plan that the state allows you to opt out by amendment, but we have opted to remain under them. And there's recreation, open space, school concurrency, traffic circulation. And fortunately for every one of these, we have no level of service issues for any of these except one. And that is solid waste. And we really do not have a concurrency issue yet. Um, Joe has been mentioning over several years that, uh, uh, the landfills are in jeopardy, if you will, or, or have issues. And, uh, I would not be doing my job if I did not bring this up forward, and I have, uh, discussed this with Joe, and, cause, uh, so after this meeting or after this adoption of the schedule, it's gonna be in Joe's hands from here on. So, uh, 2018, uh, our landfill is projected to be at capacity. When we reach that point, if we have a thousand employer come in here, he cannot get permitted. If you have a single-family home, they cannot be permitted, uh, because you have, uh, exceeded concurrency. You, so we have possibly five years to come to a solution, uh, to, to address this issue. And, um, uh, y'all could put it blunt, and you're gonna have to be working with Joe very carefully, because this, this is an issue you cannot avoid. It is here. Uh, because of budget restraints, we've put it off, and there's no way, uh, and this is, uh, the board is thoroughly justified. The board has, well, we lose forty percent of the revenue over the last few years. That is a tremendous impact. And the board is not watching DC. You cannot print money. So you do not have that luxury that they do. And, um, so, um, in the, um, report, I gave some talking points and things like this to go over. Um, fortunately, um, as we go into this budget year, um, uh, the Budget Committee is gonna have to address it. And, um, with our options that comes up. So, um, the main reason for the talking points in the report is just to get the board, you know, to, um, open discussion, get you thinking, because we, we are coming to our own physical cliff pretty soon, both in a, with a, as a monetary cliff and as a physical, uh, cliff also. So, um, um, that is the major thing on the concurrency issue.
Before you get off landfill, David, if the chair, if you, if you don't mind me, uh, I see that, and I know, know it's coming, but I see that we've kinda appropriated in, in two thousand fourteen a half a million dollars, and then in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, a half a million dollars, that the plan. And is that for acquisition, or is that a number that's hard, or is that a number that, that we're just estimating?
Actually, that is carried over from last year when we presented to you. Uh, actually, we, we had an update of them. Um, 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 in discussion with Joe, is I think, as he shared with you, that probably any new permitting or any extension may require a liner. I think a liner starts at one million dollars and up. So, um, it's an expensive process we're fixing, you know, we're having to address now. And, um, so, um-
Yeah, I think we've talked about this landfill many times. We even, at one time, went out for RFQ for somebody to operate that landfill. And it, I just think, Joe, you really need to research every option that we may have. And at the end of the day, whoever sits on the Budget Committee this year, you need to, you know, have them some options laid out. It's something we're gonna have to address. We've cut this budget over the last four years by, by forty percent, and I think we've come to the realization that we can't do that any longer. We're, we've, we've cut all that we can cut. And we're gonna have to make some hard decisions. But I do think that we need to have, you know, options. Here's, here's what it would cost if we do this. Here's an option that we could do, or, you know, I know, at one time, we talked, time we talked about the extension upwards. I don't know how permissible that is and those type things, but I just think, ju, just be prepared to, to, uh, to work with the Budget Committee and, and let's figure this thing out.
For the board, I hope nobody thinks I'm trying to upset Joe, um, because Joe's been on top of this. It's just been a difficult times, and it's hard to proceed with it on these financial situations. Another thing is, uh, in your packet is also, you'll see a, a demographics kind of, um, tracking population. Our population through the next fifteen, twenty years is expected to be just neutral. And, um, but the alarming trend is, if you look at some of the graphs, is school age population is, is dr, is going down. The employment, the number of employed is going down. Not necessarily the employment rate, but the number of employees. I mean, people employed. And if also probably, uh, if you look, you'll see your senior population is rising. And that's varied out by two, by your median ages over the last few years, I think it's gone from forty-something, forty-point-something to forty-two-point-something. So that just means our population is getting older, which can require more if, uh, demands on EMS, hospital, health department, you know, um, services dealing with this. So, um, if there's any questions on the report, or if the board would like me to address anything, uh, you know, else before adoption, uh, just let me know. Uh, and, um, uh, on the capital improvement schedule, that is completely open. Uh, some of probably what you had before you may can be taken off, and some can be updated, changed. Um, so everything's open right now for adjustment until, you know, until adoption. So, um, if there's any questions from the board.
I have one question. Uh, I'd like to address Mr. Richards. Uh, David, you went over to a District Three meeting.
Yes, sir.
And I can't remember if I run back, and I, I looked over this through the weekend. All our road paving and our resurfaces and new roads, it pretty much stayed the same. Did it try to take anything from us, or did it all stay the same on it?
One of the things I noticed, State, Mr. Commissioner, is, uh, everything's in flux up there. Um, they are, because of funding also, they are shifting, combining. Uh, this was very evident on the Gulf Coast Parkway and the Gulf to Bay Highway. Um, because of fellow funds, they have to tie them together in a segment. You can't do a little here and do a little bit there. So that was the major thing. Mostly the other projects are on, on your scope, scrap and everything, they pretty much stayed the same. Um, um, if you look at the, um, chart, and this is based on last year's, what you, what I attended, uh, will be actually coming up for next year. Um, it starts at, um, fourteen fourteen, uh, what they discuss, and that is, that, um, that is year for the, um, starting at ninety-eight and going, um, up along three eighty-six for the Gulf Coast Parkway.
I, uh, we're just looking over it, and I saw that everything's pretty much on target down in the Cape area, uh, seventy-one out here up to White City, this is still on target in the, here at Daniels Road. So hopefully, we can keep those.
Yeah. Um, since you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, one thing in, in, um, we did take nice Martin Road and, um, um, I'm blank, above Old Bay City Road. And by combining them, we have made them collectors. And what a collector does is tie communities together, our roadways. So, um, this will shorten, help, uh, fund the paving that's going on now, and also, uh, um, it does put it under a level of service now for the area snout. And, um, also, the next thing we did is, we were able to do a collector, change it to a collector through, uh, Jarrett Daniels Road, which is three eighty-six to-
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, which was shortened, having to go all the way up to Loo Ridge and, and around. So, and a, in a long point, maybe that road might even become part of the Gulf to Bay. Uh, that design, as far as I know, has not, um, um, been deci, uh, finalized. Uh, a little report in the board, um, not from the, uh, meeting I went to, but discussion with the engineers, that the, um, Gulf to Bay Highway is, is, uh, still active. We have not heard much from it, but it's, is, is still active. So, um, and, um, and, uh, I think, in that area's been a very good Gulf County, if you notice in the projects. We have received a lot of paving, a lot of improvements, um, um, on our roadways.
I was gonna mention that too. David, I actually met with FDOT Secretary Prasad yesterday and talked to, you know, about, um, Gulf County Coalition and the relationship that they have with the, with the DOT. I know we in Gulf County, uh, with our, uh, with Tuan has even wrote grants, and, and DOT has, has matched their grants because they were on state roads. C thirty being for one with the rocks. And, and so we've, we've got a, a great relationship. He actually wants all of us to do the best that we can to work with our state legislators to make sure that the funding continues for the FDOT, because it's important not only for, uh, the, the county itself, but it's important for economic development. And, and we specifically talked about the port, they're big supporters of the port. So FDOT has really been a friend. If you'll look on that five-year work plan, I think it was over ten million dollars that we've got coming up in the next few years. So they have been really good to Gulf County.
And as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that the whole thing about dealing with the DOT and with scrap, scope, and, you know, the other projects, is that it is subject to legislature action. And, um, funding shifts and things like this, they could project it in their plan, and then it'd be changed, you know, to a different priority or something. So, um, especially with the DOT projects, they, you know, they can swing, and, uh, that's really, we try to make that note in the capital improvement. So, any other questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. David.
Can I throw in just a, a follow-up on David?
Yes, sir.
It, it was pretty blunt, but it, it still, it comes down to, and, and again, the President Review Committee puts it all every year. Uh, it'd be good if Joe could, could do a workshop for the board on the, on the landfill. And it, and it comes down to that, you know, we, we recommended a pay, uh, uh, increase last year. I think the board took a lower increase, but it's never been implemented, and still have not increased the fee. Every time somebody goes to the landfill, everyone's got to pay or pay more money.
Yes, sir.
And the more you use, the more you pay. And the more times that contractors bring pressure-treated wood, we charge one rate, we collect it, we haul it to Panama City, and pay them a higher rate. So, I mean, at the end of the day, pricing structure's got to be changed on the landfill and the sooner than later. And then, of course, staff's got all different kinds of recommendations on the long term, whether we contract it out, you know, privatize it or whatnot, out of county, instead of building a line landfill, which probably, we're never gonna be able to hold. At the end of the day, putting off, raising the tip of the fee, costs everyone taxpayer can make you look harder and harder every single year. And Joe's got the, the figures that, you know, he can lay it out for you.
The life of me, I thought we made a motion and passed a motion to go up to, uh, uh, an average rate, uh, which was forty-five or forty-six. We never did, we talked about it, and never did make the motion.
Right now, what is the rate for the landfill?
Five dollars a ton.
Thirty-five, and how much it costs to take it to Panama City?
Forty, forty, yeah, forty-seven, fifty. They went up, they went up five dollars a ton.
Won't stay in business like that.
Wait a minute. That doesn't include fuel and employee. So we're talking about probably sixty.
And, and don't, don't get me wrong, that's just for certain items, pressure-treated wood and things that can't go in our landfill, but the gist is, it costs you somewhere closer to a hundred dollars a ton, stuff in the landfill, and we charge thirty-five dollars.
But basically, I want everybody to understand what's going on at the landfill, because, you know, we have a, a big thing about the landfill. I, I hear a lot about the landfill. If we get a ton of pressure-treated wood, uh, we take it in for thirty-five dollars a ton. But we cannot bury pressure-treated wood at the landfill. We have to take it to the accelerator in Panama City. They're gonna charge us forty-seven, forty-eight cent, Mr. Forty-eight dollars a ton to take it over. You will not stay in business like that. That won't work. So, I mean, we got a serious problem with our landfill, and, and from what, listening to what Mr. David said, twenty eighteen is right around the corner.
Well, why hasn't it been increased? Begs the question. Is there a reason that you've held off on increasing it?
Uh, uh, actually, I thought that we had made the motion. We had discussed it, and we had got a consensus in a budget meeting last year about raising it to an average of what, what it was, uh, locally, and that average was around forty-six or forty-seven dollars a ton. But I presume that we never made that motion and put it in effect, but which, which we need to do that. At the end of the day, it's like this, guys, and I've said this all along, that you added the one taxpayers paying is footing the bill. And we've got to figure out, uh, how to take some of that off the property, property taxpayer and put it on the user. And so I think a workshop, as sooner better than later, uh, would be appropriate and for us to make the appropriate decisions on what we need to do with that landfill.
I would like to make the motion that we have as soon as possible, a, a workshop with Mr. Danford. I-
Second that.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Yeager. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh, that we're gonna settle meeting with Mr. Danford as soon as possible, Mr. Danford.
Now, do we need to address the fees prior to the workshop? You all have been addressing these late.
Don't piecemeal it, do it all at once.
All righty, uh, what's the Gulf County Sheriff?
If you can, um, Mr. Chairman, if you just ask if there's any public comment from the hearing aspect of it before you move on to the next item.
Do you have any public comments? Do you have any public comments? No public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Butler, the Gulf County Sheriff?
Mr. Chairman, uh, today we have a new sheriff in town. We had a conversation, good conversation last week. Uh, the attorney did, uh, Commissioner Matt Daniel did. We, um, had a conversation about this letter that, uh, the past sheriff put in. Uh, he agreed, uh, there's no reason today to discuss the letter. Uh, he'll be doing his audit, uh, of the books and at some point in the future, he'll be back, talk to you about what he may need and not. Um, there's several things, several ways he's planning on cutting and, um, like he's eliminating a position and by eliminating that position, I think, I don't want to step off in his territory, but he's going to add another, another position on, on the road that'll at a cheaper rate, so he'll be back.
We're just waiting, we're waiting to hear from the sheriff, the new sheriff in town. Uh, county staff, start with, uh, Eric.
Which one?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Come on, I, I get, I get to it.
Okay. Um, in front of you, uh, good morning and happy new year. Um, in front of you, you have the, uh, monthly report from the TDC for the month of December. A few things are happening. We, um, have completed the guidelines for the, um, wedding partner program. We anticipate about fifteen partners joining in this program. We had a public workshop. We didn't, we're very resourceful. We did an impromptu photo shoot with one of our team members and, um, her, a little bit frightened boyfriend at this point, but we have a beautiful wedding shot and a brand new trade show booth. So that's wonderful. Um, we also have some jump drives that we'll, we'll give out specifically to well-qualified leads when we go to three trade shows, one in Macon, one in Birmingham and one in Atlanta. We have great support from our partners and we'll continue to move on. Um, and you can see a copy of that trade show booth, it's in your packet. Um, we're hoping to embark on a pet-friendly media program, um, that we talked about before. It'll be aired for, in the month of February and March in Atlanta and Birmingham. We have a film crew coming next week, so we'll be out and about, not only filming pet-friendly areas, um, but really all of Gulf County. Uh, one of the reasons why we chose this program is because of the added value, one of them being B-roll footage, which is the extra footage from filming that the TDC can use for future use for pitching or for whatever else. And that's, um, a really, really great service. I have been out and about on the beaches with my colleagues, Mr. Cothran and Mr. Comsworth. We have looked at all of the pet stations on this side of the county. Um, we are developing a plan that we can actually make sure all of the pet-friendly stations and the waste buckets and everything that has to do with this program are uniformed, they're detailed, they're mapped and they're kept up well. Uh, Sheriff Harrison came to our meeting last week. He is also committed to, uh, making sure that he understands, um, the pet-friendly stations, having an officer come in and compliance once he gets, um, into the job. I know that also there's been an incident recently with some interactions with a dog and a visitor. So we're all working together to make sure that we embrace the entire issue and our pet-friendly connotation and that, um, we're providing the best experience to our visitors. The TDC team will be embarking on a weekly TV show on the new Channel Seventeenth Coastal Connection. Uh, we'll do a thirty-minute show each week, uh, highlighting all of Gulf County. Right now, it's just loosely titled, Exploring Gulf County. We'll be able to film all over the county. The, the viewership reaches through Walton County into Franklin County, up into some parts of, of Northern Bay County and they're, and they are also affiliated with two stations in Alabama. We will, um, make sure that we can develop the content, so it will go in line with our content plan. And we will also highlight, um, we'll have a special highlight each segment for our sponsors. In addition to garnering B-roll, which as I said is very important, TDC partners will receive, um, a ten percent discount on advertising on the station. So we're doing a trade and still trying to provide, um, added value to our partners. Activity in the Welcome Center increased thirty-one percent in December and our leads garnered were eighteen percent. In November, bed tax revenues were down about one, um, one point three percent, uh, and we're working on that. We've been talking as a council and analyzing that. Uh, and also we began reporting through Google Analytics, the activity on the website. We are almost through with our research initiatives. The Visitor Perception Study came back with great success. Lots of interesting findings that I'm not going to tell you about until February fifth, but, um, the Brand Ambassador Study was initiated yesterday. So we'll take all of the studies, compile them together, put together all the common threads and hold a public workshop here on Tuesday, February fifth at five-thirty. It's open to all the public and I think, I encourage anybody to attend because it's very, very important of, of the findings that we're, that we're seeing. Um, I heard that we had a really great Celebrate Twice, uh, event. I was, like many of people in Gulf County, down for the count with the flu, but we had fireworks, six trolleys, um, with Mexico Beach and, um, very low reporting of incidents and I've heard that it was very successful. I worked with, um, the Public Works Team, they made these great sandwich boards and working with the city and the fire chief and the police chief was, went very smoothly and I'm very happy to report it was a success, a successful event. In your packet, um, there's a sample, uh, bid specs for beach cleaning, um, that per our, uh, council meeting last week, I'd like to ask for approval for the TDC to go out to bid, um, and, and post, um, an open for a company that will clean our beaches beginning in March through September. Um, you can see it in your packet. The idea is to have a company on a schedule that is, um, reports through the TDC, that cleans up the beach, um, and also aligns with the work crews so that we're keeping our beaches clean constantly. Look, it in there. And if I could have your approval so the TDC could go out to bid for beach cleaning.
So moved to advertise.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh.
Thank you. Also you have in your packet, um, over the holidays, we had posted, um, uh, an RFP for printing of the Visitor Guide. We received, um, a, a proposal back upon review of the proposal and in discussion with my council. Um, they have requested that we reject that bid and go back out for printing, um, an RFP for printing of the two thousand thirteen Visitor Guide.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh.
Thank you. And one more, um, stemming from some of the research and, and the findings from our social media, um, evaluation, I'm asking, and with the approval of my council, that the TDC goes out for an RFQ to seek qualified companies that provide strategic social and digital media service, services for brands and sub-brands.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Yeager?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh.
And two more quick things. Also, the council has, um, has suggested that the TDC work closely with the State Film Office. I think that there's lots of opportunity for us to work with that, um, team in Tallahassee to promote Gulf County for commercial and, um, television production and also films. It's a great way to fill up the off-season. We have wonderful places and Gulf County can be transformed and those crews come and they rent houses and, um, it's a great way to get exposure for Gulf County. Finally, um, uh, the clerk has given to us, Ms. Norris gave us prior to the holiday, um, the findings from the state auditor, um, with the details, um, from the Oakloups County CVB. Mr. Novak has it and, um, Ms. Norris and I, we, uh, will be meeting this month to go through those findings. There's twenty-five of them. And then to be sure that the TDC is in compliance with all the findings from the state auditor and I'll report on that in, um, February.
Thank you, Ms. Jill.
Thank you.
Ms. Leah?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, at the request of the board, uh, we polled, uh, the entities in reference to, um, economic development, uh, in an informational workshop. Um, for those involved that we polled, it looks as if, uh, January sixteenth, the Thursday, Wednesday, I apologize, um, at ten AM is the most available time for the, uh, city commission, um, as well as the majority, um, of the people requested. So the board would like to move on that. We can get the notifications out on the public notice.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we do any motion on that, Mr.? We got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels?
I'll, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Yeager? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh.
Thank you, sir. And, and that will be held here in, in the boardroom or we could do as we've done in the past and do it at the EOC.
Uh, I, I prefer just doing it at EOC.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll get that noticed accordingly. Um, a second item, uh, we have a vacancy on the planning board and, um, been a rec, uh, recommendation for Mr. Robert Nations and he will accept that nomination for the planning, as a planning board member with the board's approval.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh.
That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Carter? All right. Mr. Joe?
Bid number twelve, thirteen dash zero three. Project is Public Works Inventory. Saint Joe Auto Parts came in at one thousand twenty-nine and eighty-five cents. Harold's Auto Parts came in at nine eighty-two and eighty cents. I recommend that we go with the low bidder, Harold's Auto Parts.
Would you give those numbers again, please?
Yes, sir. One thousand twenty-nine and eighty-five cents for Saint Joe Auto Parts.
Okay.
Harold's Auto Parts, nine eighty-two and eighty cents.
Thank you. So moved, accept the bid.
Got a motion by Mr. Michael, Michael Moore?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels?
Just a question, is that, is that on all parts or is that, what is that on?
That's listed parts that we have, had bid on. We have-
Okay.
We have several pages of parts.
Okay.
But, uh, some of them are so infrequent that it would be useless to name them.
Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yesterday, uh, we've been talking to Department of Economic Opportunity, um, over possibility of a technical grant to assist in updating our LDRs and yesterday we received it. That's the reason I couldn't present it any faster. So, uh, uh, the county attorney's got a copy, it's for, uh, thirty thousand dollars. Uh, it's, uh, June thirtieth deadline, so it's going to be time sensitive. Uh, the county, uh, asked the board to, uh, let us, uh, enter into the contract with his approval and his, um, to, um, get our LDRs called up and, and, in line.
Have a motion to let the attorney reveal before we go into it?
Satisfied with the way they're going?
Yeah, yeah, I received this morning, but if we can have a, um, a conditional approval to accept the grant, it's eight thousand in March, twenty-two thousand received in June to update the LDRs and the initial grant is for the setup and the planning and the twenty-two thousand's for the implementation. So subject to attorney review, we can accept that grant.
So moved.
I got a mo, motion by Mr. Yeager, second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir, I do have one thing today. I had placed a copy of change order number two with Bay Landscape and Palm Service. This is on the approaches for the White City Bridge. There's some additional money in the grant and, um, based on a request by the project manager for DOT, um, they would like to spend the rest of that money. Um, so they've requested we approve an increase, a change order in the amount of forty-seven thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. What they want to do is, um, landscape the, the actual slopes of the, of the bridge there and, and make it a mow-mow zone. Um, basically landscaping will, will reduce the amount of, of mowing that'll have to be done in that area.
I have a question. Does this just increase in the same area they were in and doesn't extend it on beyond the side street with the, uh, some of the residents that had rest concern?
Oh, yes, it, it won't, it won't go to the residents. Um, there's actually attached, are, are a couple of drawings that will show where the additional work will be. But it will, there's, as you see, there's the, the one area just past where the, the road comes around and loops there, there's some areas right there on that side, uh, where they show some trees.
Okay.
Um, but other than that, it will stay right there in the, nine on the other side of the road.
Thank you.
Um, and I can, I can follow up with Ms. Pam on that.
All right, thank you.
To make sure that it will not go on that side. And then also even, even the ones that are right there past that, the road that, that curves around, we can make sure that, you know, they, they don't put those there if that's a problem for the, for the homeowners on that side as well.
Yeah, one quick question, Ms., uh, Tuon, is this on all part of the bridge, is this bridge approach or just strictly out here?
This is strictly on the White City Bridge. It had, it had to be on the-
Sure, that's all.
Right, it had to be on the state right away and, um, we had submitted for the other street, but if that's a county road and they won't take it back, then, um, they, they wouldn't do it on that road.
So moved, change order.
Uh, Ms. Tuon, um, I've voiced my, uh, concern with you. I know it's grant money, but you go and put in a bid and then you come out with a change order for more than what you bid. It, it kind of, to me, it defeats the purpose of having a bid. So I would just want, I just want to voice that concern to minds when you can put in a bid for a certain price and then come out with a change order and your, your bid is more than everybody else's bid that was in there. So, uh, it's just a concern to minds.
I, I understand that, Mr. Chairman. I, I will say it's just, it's, it's money's, it's going, it's additional money's going back into the project, correct? I mean, it's an additional amount of dollars.
My understanding on it is there, there was a set amount of money that DOT had to do this project. The bids came in obviously a lot lower than the amount of money they had available and so they went, we went with the low bid and there's, it's-
Still, still the money there.
The money's still there in the land.
All you're doing is enhancing the project.
Right, right.
Had an increase in the scope of work.
Exactly. They're increasing the scope of work. It's not that they're doing the same amount of work, they're, they're doing double the amount of work than what was originally planned because the, the bids did come in solo.
Got a motion number four, Michael Moore?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh.
Um, that's all I have and if you, if nobody has anything for me, we do have a restore meeting at eleven o'clock, so I'll be slipping out in a few minutes to go over to that meeting. I just wanted you to be aware, that's where I'll be sliding out to.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the first item I have is a few items with regards to our ship policy. Uh, over the holidays, uh, we've had some discussion, uh, Mr. Lowry, who's our ship director and myself, and we've been working with our consultant, Michael Chaney, the Florida Housing Coalition. Uh, the first issue that has come up, uh, is with regards to past ship applicants in the county in the past. They received, uh, ship award, um, in a certain amount and what we've had in the past in terms of our ALHOP policy that you've all adopted, is an inability for that person to ever receive ship funds again. Um, water heaters is an example that has been explained to me that folks would receive in the community and once they receive that, um, ship award, they would never be able to apply again for a more substantial, uh, loan, rehab loan, or even purchase assistance. Um, we've explored it with the state, um, it doesn't violate state statute and what we'd ask the commission to do is, uh, consider amending your ALHOP policy for a thousand dollar threshold, that if ship applicants in the past have received a certain amount below a thousand dollars, that they're not precluded from either applying again one time for a rehab assistance or a purchase assistance. And we'd ask you to entertain, uh, amending your policy to award that in the future and let Mr. Lowry move forward in that direction.
Got a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yeager? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh.
Thank you, we'll amend the policy accordingly. The second, um, about seven or eight months ago, this commission, um, granted the administrator and the ship director and myself to have the authority and not come before you each time in terms of hardship and, uh, ship applicants seeking forgiveness of their loans when they were either foreclosed on and there was a deficit and the primary lender would be foreclosing a property, when the alternative there is a short sale. Um, we've gone through several of those and not brought them before you and the administrator, Mr. Lowry and myself have, uh, issued those satisfactions of those ship mortgages when they're, they've signed an affidavit, they've submitted a sales contract, they've submitted a HUD showing that they're not receiving any funds. What we now have is under the HARP and the HAFL programs, these federal bail- Mr. Lowry and myself have issued those satisfactions of those ship mortgages when they're, they've signed an affidavit, they've submitted a sales contract, they've submitted a HUD showing that they're not receiving any funds. What we now have is under the HARP and the HAFA programs, these federal bailout mortgage programs, we have several ship applicants who are going through short sale process, but they're receiving some funds from the federal government for relocation and moving expenses. And with those HUDs that are coming in, when we receive them, they can't sign the affidavit saying they're not receiving any funds from the short sale closing. So I'd ask you all to extend your current policy of enabling the administrator and the ship director and myself that if they sign those affidavits and they show that only those HAFA or HARP funds are being received for relocation, that we still have the ability not to bring them before you and issue those satisfactions.
Can I get a motion?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Uh, return to relocation.
Yes, sir, on the actual HUD statements, it'll state there that they're HARP or HAFA funds that have been given to the seller of the property in a short sale. And say we have a fifteen thousand dollar ship loan we've given someone five years ago. In our mortgages and under the ship program, each year that goes by, they're forgiven at ten percent of that loan, so they knock it down. And in these short sales or these foreclosure scenarios, these folks will receive from the federal government a certain amount of money for relocation and moving expenses and it's stated as such on there. So it's permitted under the federal program and we want the ability to continue to consider these ship hardship cases. They submit a letter, they submit the affidavit and they're in full compliance but for that money that the government's giving them.
We have a motion, you got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels?
I'll, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Jaeger? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
The third policy on the ship that Mr. Lowry and Mr. Butler and I would like to add to your current authority that you've given staff is subordination. So we have ship applicants in the past who have purchased a home with ship funds and they come back and the ship loan is in place, but they can't refinance or they can't secure an additional loan on the home to do additional improvements. And they've come to the county and asked for the ability to subordinate the county's ship loan so they can go out and refinance the homes or borrow additional money for the purposes solely of fixing up their homes that they're currently living in, enhancing the value of the property. So we'd ask that if you all would give the county staff the ability to consider those applications for subordination and if appropriate and deem such by the administration to sign those subordinations and give them to the ship applicants.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Jaeger?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Jenkins and I, over the holidays, she had discussed with you earlier the media buy and as you all recall, last year we had a outside marketing agency that worked for the county in the TDC. Ms. Jenkins is now heading the TDC department and has brought that background with her. She is in the process of going out and allocating her TDC budget funds and tax dollars this year for media buys. And I've had discussions with the county clerk who's joined Ms. Pam in Calhoun for investor today, so she's not with us, but I've had the discussion with her and our result of our discussion was just to bring it before you all in terms of county policy with regards to TDC media buys. In the past, we had an outside agency that would buy the media buys, submit tear sheets and then seek reimbursement from the county. We no longer have that agent or middle person to go out and negotiate that. What we have now is an executive director who makes the media buys directly. There's no markup, there's no contract and there's no percentages. She goes directly to the publishers or the media outlets, the TV stations, whatever, you know, Atlanta, Birmingham Publications and purchases media on behalf of the TDC directly. With that, there's significant purchases and the contracts are now going to come to Ms. Jenkins, but it's been allocated in her budget and the discussion with the clerk was just an acknowledgement that the TDC has this marketing and advertising function and on an annual basis, the director needs the ability to go out and enter these agreements. There is no RFPs because you have a sole source. If you advertise in New York Times, it's the only New York Times. So as the TDC council moves forward and they choose the Atlanta Journal Constitution to advertise, the director's gonna go and purchase however much advertisement, but there is no markup and she goes directly to the actual publication. So we'd ask on behalf of the clerk that there be an acknowledgement from the, from the commission that the TDC director can move in accordingly.
Guys, this makes great sense and this is one of the reasons that Jennifer, our TDC, she's done an excellent job, she's got abilities, it's over and beyond what, what we've had in the past and this is gonna save the TDC fifteen to twenty percent. So it, this is a positive thing moving forward and it makes sense for her to be able to do that, so I'll put in that in the form of a motion just to confirm that.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Second, discussion.
Second for discussion by Mr. Mike Daniels?
Yes, and ladies and gentlemen, eliminating the middleman.
Yes, so there's no more fifteen, twenty percent markup for consultants and there's no outside contracts. Ms. Jenkins is directly, directly purchasing the medias.
Thank you.
Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, we discussed and you approved the condition of industrial park lease. I just wanted to report to you, the EDAs come back to us since then, has approved that, we provided to the tenant and we're waiting signed leases back from them. Wonder also, you had mentioned earlier, Mr. Nations being appointed to the PDRV, I'll work with him in the next week before our twenty-first meeting, have his sunshining training and get the compliance completed with him before then. You heard Ms. Tuon earlier mention our Restore Act Committee. Since our last, we've had our two workshops last month, we're having another meeting today and then another follow-up meeting at eleven o'clock next Tuesday on the fifteenth. We've had a few submissions up to this point that will be considered and again, we encourage the public to attend today's meeting, to answer any lingering questions before the first round of application cutoffs, which is next Tuesday, the fifteenth, for the public's information. I wanted to update, I've spoken with Wingmark Representatives with regards to the Phase One and the striping and the signage this week. I met with them last week, they've submitted some sign language to myself, I received yesterday. I'm gonna review that this week and get back to them. They're moving forward ideally in getting up those signs along Phase One for the public access under RDRI as well as those temporary thirty spots until they find more permanent parking spaces for access to Phase One and those peers. And then finally, you all have a copy of the Oil Spill Response Commission final report in your packet. Mr. Butler and myself had attended back on December seventeenth, it was a culmination of six meetings dating back to last August. It was adopted and then sent up to the state and the governor. And you all have a copy, so we have to answer questions to that as well. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Butler?
Chairman, first thing, I don't know if you heard or not, it was high tide in Miami last night. Our county bids, number twelve thirteen dash zero four, the, our county committee reviewed the bids, there were five bids. We reviewed the two little bids and they were tied on the amount of money and we had a recommendation to you that Ms. Kendra McDaniel get the bid for park cleanup for the following year. With this declaration, there's a ninety day probation period. In the event it doesn't work out, we go to another of the bidders. Recommendation is Kendra McDaniel would clean the park, three hundred and fifty dollars per month, I mean, three hundred and fifty dollars per week.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
We got a recommendation by Mr. Butler, we got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to abstain from that, I wasn't aware of this and relative, so I'll have to abstain from it.
Got to abstain from Mr. Mike Daniels, can I get a second? Can I pass the chair?
Yes, you can.
By Mr. Mike Daniels sustaining, can I pass it to him since he's the vice chair or do I pass it?
For administrative purposes, you can pass it to the vice chair to administer the vote, he's already abstained from the participation.
I'd like to second that. As the chairman, Mr. Mike Daniels, I'd like to second that.
All right, motion on the floor. Have a second, any further discussion?
Yes.
Michael Moore, Commissioner Michael Moore.
No, I don't, I'm not gonna discuss it, but I do wanna vote on it when you call for the vote.
This is low bid, correct?
Yes, it is low bid.
Okay.
It's actually a tied bid. We had two bidders to come up with the same bid.
Two, two low bids, we interviewed both and we made a recommendation.
Okay. Further discussion? All right, call for vote. Devote Ms. Commissioner Bryant?
I'll vote, yes.
Yes, Commissioner Michael Moore?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
You're abstaining.
Motion carries, four, one, three, one. Three, one, one abstaining.
Bill, the chair back.
Yes. Mr. Butler?
Mr. Chairman, information packet, page one through three, the county council is looking for the county commission to give two appointees, one being a county elected official, one being a city elected official for the ARPC governing board. I had a conversation with Commissioner Bryant yesterday and I'd like to turn it over to her and let her have this conversation, but she had shown some interest in that position.
Well, obviously we need to appoint someone else over this bond and I believe that with my background and experience level that I would be suited to sit on that board, I think it's an important board.
So move, Mr. Chairman, for Ms. Bryant to sit on the floor.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Come back.
Second by Mr. Michael Moore? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
That's all I have.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one thing I wanna touch bases with, with the attorney on. Uh, this attorney, that with us landing lease agreement, are we still trying to continue on with that? We're trying to get a long-term lease on it. If not, I'd like for you to continue that and see if we can reach a long-term lease agreement on that landing.
I'll have to go back, on the top of my head, I don't know, so I'll go back and review that, Commissioner, I'll touch base with you on it.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, we've talked about several of the things that I had, but one of the things was we've got a couple of folks that, that come off the Restore Act Committee. One of them was Loretta Colston, she was in education, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jim Norton in that position, superintendent of schools, so I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels? Any opposed? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Uh, the other one, I, I need a representative from the city of Weewaw and so I, I would like to appoint Tony Justice and I haven't talked to Chuck Tony, but he's been very good about attending meetings that we've asked him to attend, so I'd like to appoint Tony Justice to represent.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels? Any opposed? No opposed, no, no opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
The only other thing I had, and I'll get with the, with the fire department, but I met with a fire marshal yesterday at the state too, at Tallahassee, and there's some grant dollars that are available to volunteer fire departments only that have just come about and basically what they'll do is they'll provide training and they'll provide bunker gear, which can, as, as you well know, can be upwards of a thousand dollars or better. So I'll, I'll forward that information on that, those, those grants will be coming about in February, I think, so. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Jaeger, you continue to work on that for that bunker gear. Mr. Mike Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of items, first of all, we discussed prior here about our landfill. I've had a lot of people approach me about possibly having an amnesty day at our landfill that's strictly for Gulf County residents, oh contractors. Hopes that it might, a per month, it might help eliminate some of the debris on the road, we have to pick it up anyway, it's not poisonous, but it might help get a little of this. I'm gonna call for a vote, but I just wanna bring this board to maybe consider an amnesty day for the residents of Gulf County, five points a per month.
Good workshop, this guy.
Exactly. We'll go right over here with you, Joe, we figured. All right, Mr. Michael Moore, you ready?
I'm ready, though.
Okay. Uh, on this street lighting issue, over the holidays, I think the, I hear Commissioner Jaeger made it barely clear, we needed to cut, we had fifty-three, we're gonna cut out and of the fifty-three, I think forty-two were in the north end of county. But I've had people and it was to be at intersections. Now, I want this clearly understood, the state of Florida, anytime a county road intersects with a state road and a light is placed there, we do get, am I correct, we get reimbursement or we get some compensation from the state?
We get a, we get a portion of the reimbursement for the cost of those lights. We used to get the entire cost, but that has decreased.
Uh, I rode around, Mr. Michael Moore, over in the Lands Landing area, I don't know any of you here are familiar with it, but old transfer going in off of seventy-one going east, the north side is in the city. City of Weewahichka has thirteen streetlights on old transfer and on the south side, you have three private lights, it's, it's lit up. Come around to the boat part, at the boat ramp there, at, we have two light lights and we have two of these solar lights, so we, we got good lighting there. There's four intersections there that needs streetlights. Need a light there at these four intersections. We have my own land drive and that would be East Lakeview, West Lakeview and Sunset. Intersect in the land drive and the other one is River, Riverview and Tanglewood. But we had, I don't know how many were eliminated out there, probably seventeen lights, something there, but fourteen. Fourteen, okay, anyway, these four need to go back. I know it's Commissioner, uh, Michael Moore District, but people come to me and I don't care where you at in the county, if you come to me, I'm gonna help you, but, I'll try to help you. We need to consider, uh, for safety purposes, that we put four streetlights back. I went to Gulf Coast Electric, had a meeting with them and I don't know Progress Energy, but eleven dollars per month for light, that's what Gulf Coast Electric charges. But this is for a safety issue here, we have this, I have some in District Two. And find them together or work on it separately. All right, in District Two, out in the, if any of you here, I don't see anybody much from Weewahichka area, in the Williamsburg area, Commissioner Smiley's familiar with it, road going in, part of it is in the city, it's still lit. Get over in the county, it's all ninety degree, roads make ninety degree angles, all of them. We removed, we need three lights back out there, we removed, I think, four or five, I'm not sure, but we need three at three intersections. None of this is for individuals, I can go by the on, but we need three. Williamsburg, I need one in an area that had a three-way stop, moved it and it's on the Gary Row Road going into the state park, I mean into the, down to Lakes Park. I need, I'm gonna ask this board to consider four for District One and four for District Two.
May, go ahead, may I comment? As you all know, I'm, I'm the only one that didn't support cutting off any streetlights during the budget session. All right, and here we are now, here, here's the problem I have with this issue, we went and we cut them all off. Right now, the problem I have with it now is we're wanting to go back and turn certain lights back on. Well, the problem with that is, I mean, that's good, every light that we can get turned on, I support it, you know, but we have other areas that's just as critical as Lands Landing or Williamsburg that's at intersections. Good example, two good examples, Brian Slenden Road, Doug Slenden Road, both on the intersection, both on down that Dow Keep Highway. The water fisherman, whatever, is wide open, you know, so my point is, if, if we're gonna do this, let's do it at all intersections, seems like that's where the biggest problems is, is located, is that not right, Mr. McDaniel?
Uh.
The intersections are the ones that's safety.
One of the people, uh, some of the residents over there came to me on this and I went over at night in Pentland. When you come across from the old street road three eighty-six, you go down Lands Drive, which is the south end of, South Street over there. It is there and these streets come in in angles, only one ninety degree, the rest angle in and all I was looking for is for some safety there, it's not matter who lives there, it's what it is.
But it is an intersection though.
Oh, yeah. And that was in the original, I, gun on this one, would come into that all or none, we didn't take.
I would, I would hope that if we're gonna review this, that we, that we look at all of the intersections, that's the safety issue.
Well, and, and look, I understand, there is definitely a safety issue in some of these intersections. Our problem was before, as it got out of hand, I, I think before, some of the lights that were put up would never come before the board, somebody just said, go put some lights up and we, we had lights everywhere. Somebody just said, "Go put some lights up," and we, we had lights everywhere. And I want to tell you, there is a difference between the south end expense and the north end expense. There's also, you make a great point, uh, Commissioner, that, you know, if you start doing one, you got to do them all, and we can't afford to do them all. When you, when you look at the intersections that we have in this county, we can't afford, we can't even begin to afford. The way that the city funds that is they have a tax on the Progress Energy. So the city of Port St. Joe can fund all their, all their lighting through the tax on Progress Energy. We don't have that. So if we put any out, it's the taxpayers of, of this county that's going to pay for all those. And you can't do them all, you can't do them all. I don't have an issue with commissioners coming in here and say, "Look, I've got a problem intersection. It's a safety issue and we need to put one of these, these intersections." I don't have, have a problem with reviewing that and trying to address those issues. But when we go to saying that we're going to put one at every intersection in the county, guys, we can't afford that.
We can't do that.
We can't do that.
What my point was there with the intersection is the, of the lights that we already had that had been cut off, that's what I was pointing to. I wasn't directing it going out to every intersection and putting the streetlight. I'm just saying it, it's hard to cut this light off over at this intersection and turn this one back on at this intersection. You, you do one, you got to do, you got to do two, you know?
When, when you originally decided which to cut and which to leave on, didn't, did you review all of the lights? And I, I mean, I assume that you made a decision based on certain criteria.
I, I made my decision on two issues. Safety and security.
Mr. Chairman, talk this up. Fine, I'm just asking the will of the people that came to me here, that these do comply. I will not, and I got lambasted, and I told a couple of people, I said, "The county's not paying for your private light. That's your responsibility, just like I pay for mine." Now, out here the street, if you just happen to live there, well, that's good luck to you. A good friend over in Panama City, Mr. Bird, he just happened to have a big cow pasture. Walmart's there now, that's his good luck. But safety issues here, and we're not using this, and I said in one of the fire meetings, I don't like stuff used like this for political gain. That's not what it's about. And this was truly, it's what's happened in District One. I had one in a private field out there for people to build a fire and, uh, you know, activities, well, it wasn't that, after I first got elected, we had it pulled, I'd start with. But, uh, that's not what this street lighting is about or this lighting is about, it's for safety purposes. And if we need it there, fine, if we don't, don't do it. And I rode over in the Lands area and that's all I see is, uh, four streets over there that possible, we might could eliminate River View and Tanglewood. They definitely need three on that Lands Drive, those three.
I have also received calls from folks who had their lights shut off and, and I had to explain to them that it, the board took this action and, and that they could have the light turned on if they would pay for it, that's correct. So I think there's a lot of people that are, are unhappy that they don't have a light, but there's also a lot of people out there that are paying for their own light.
Now.
Exactly.
Um.
Who's the wishes at the board?
Yeah, I, I hate to make a decision right now. Can we workshop this with, with the landfill, just add it on as another way? You know, we need to workshop some of these issues and, and let's try to figure out a fair way. I'm, you know, I'm all for, if we've got a dangerous intersection, we need to put them back. But I can't, as, as Commissioner Brian said, my fear is, is once we start putting these things back, immediately, we're going to have calls on the south end and say, you know, you've got, you've, you've got them here and you got them here, you got them here, and we need to do it here. So we need to have a process that says, "This is an intersection, it's an unsafe intersection, we need a light." And, you know, we can't just, I don't think we can do that in just one county commission meeting. So if the board would allow and if Commissioner McDaniel would allow, if we can add that on to the workshop, that'd be great.
When we first talked this to the board, that we reacted to a workshop to discuss a few things like this, because I thought it would be a problem for us in the future. So I think a workshop would be ideal.
If you don't mind, Commissioner, I've got it waiting for that.
Uh, I think where we got here and, uh, me and Commissioner Macamore might get sideways on this, but all or none, I think we didn't leave us any, uh, any compromise in there on this. And then after it took place, realizing these things, I mean, if you don't know about it, after it's happened, but I, I agree with it. Commissioner, Yeager? Workshop it. All right, we use you. Chairman, that's all.
Uh, I got one thing from the chairman on, on Old Highway twenty-two. We got cars that come down through that highway really, really fast. We got lots of kids in that area. And, and, um, over the holidays, I, I just seen where a bunch of vehicles was just entirely too fast for kids to be that close to the road. And it's something got to be, I, I mean, I don't know if we put up signs or we tried to put up speed bumps or get the shafts to try to hang out a little more over that area, but they, the vehicles got to slow down. I mean, if we got to put speed bumps in the road to slow them down, I mean, when you got people standing in the road waving their hands telling people to slow down, that's, that's too fast.
May I comment on this, Mr. McDaniel?
Yeah.
And I think I'm correct with this now. I, I don't think the county has the authority to go into the city now and change speed limit signs or any other sign.
The, uh, majority of that road is in the county.
But, but I'm just.
Yeah, I know that. We don't, oh, no, I've had to change several up there. I know we, uh, uh, Mr. Lewis and, uh, up in the Stone Mill Creek area, we had about twenty-five different speed zones up there, so we got them all standardized and, uh, think it helped everybody. And I'll go out and review this, uh, twenty-two A with, uh, Lewis back in, we'll see if we can, Commissioner, we will, I'll, I'll take care of that this afternoon.
Thank you, sir, I'd like to just.
We'll, I'll, I'll take care of that.
We have anything from the public?
Mr. Chairman, while you entertain the public, there's one other item we had, Mr. Lowery and I, I can't address with the commission.
Yes.
Uh, with regards going back to our ship, um, as you all recall, we had those Williamsburg lots that the ship program purchased under the CDC about five or six years ago with ship funds. And we received permission from Florida Housing Coalition to go and reimburse the ship trust fund about eight months ago, put the money from the county coffers back into the ship trust, um, and take those lots on so that we weren't burdened with the obligation to the state. And we now have two other lots, the White City lots, that we've been working on for a better part of six or seven months. Um, the Florida Housing Coalition told us to go out and get a comparative market analysis or an appraisal on those lots. We did that with the ship funds for the administrative costs to find out the current value. We received an appraisal for those, um, and Florida Housing Coalition has given us the conditional approval based on your consent that we can reimburse the ship trust fund as we did with the Williamsburg lots for those White City lots, and then we will not have to reimburse ship trust the original cost of those lots, I think, five or six years ago. Um, the appraisal came back at two thousand dollars for that parcel. So if we have your blessing, what we'll do in your vote, we'll go and notify Florida Housing Finance Corporation that we can take, um, and purchase, if you will, for two thousand dollars that parcel in White City, reimburse the ship trust fund for that. And like I said, at the end of the day, from the initial point where we had to reimburse them the total sum of the original purchase price to get them to come to the current market value, to only replace that two thousand dollars, um, I think it's a difference of fifty-four, fifty-five thousand dollar savings to the county. So if we can, we'd ask for your motions, we can go back to the state and let them know we have your approval.
Can you, can, can you negotiate a few with the bank?
We, can I get a?
So, so move.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager? Second by Mr. Macamore? Any opposed? Any opposed, no opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any?
Also, Berkeley Development Agency, I just wanted to catch you up on where we are with grants. There are a lot of things breaking right now. On the MLK grant for the sidewalks and stormwater, is, uh, all the contracts have been signed, so it's going to the city, so they'll do their final approval on the design and then go out to RFP. So moving forward on that. Um, BP funds are paying for a new banner program and also to update the downtown, historic downtown brochure and map. And we've coordinated with the TDC and the color scheme that they've put together for the new visitor guide, so that all those things, they're, um, they're all coordinated, not only content but color. So we're trying to follow the good branding set by the TDC. The final phase of landscaping on US ninety-eight, which we're calling the North Port St. Joe Gateway Landscaping, has also been approved and we're getting ready to go out to RFP. So that'll, that'll finish that, I'll go, almost, we'll go to Avenue D, so almost the foot of the bridge. We're getting ready to put out an RFQ for the, the video documentary that will, that will document the, um, rescue and relocation of the lighthouse. Also, I want to invite you and the public to, um, the public meeting that we'll have next Tuesday at five o'clock in the city commission chambers, um, to roll out the Bay Park master plan concept. And so I hope that, I hope that you'll be there. And now, to put on another hat for the Port St. Joe Rotary, um, the Rotary and the Gulf County Senior Citizen Center are sponsoring, um, another health fair. And this will be January twenty-fourth at the Centennial Building from nine to two o'clock. It was very well attended last year, um, and we're looking for the same. Any questions?
Thank you, Yeager.
Anything else from the public? Anything else from the public? Anything from the public, can I get a motion from the board to? Motion by Mr. Yeager, second by Mr. Macamore.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Needing a job.